Madam Clerk, do we have only Daniel Bramall?
No, we also have Mr. Fisher as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to do... All right, fine. I'm going to do a dual interview since both of these candidates are volunteers for the Office of Emergency Management. So we're basically, you know, have them both, you know, listen at the same time and they can individually answer the questions, okay?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. So Daniel and Bill, I believe that I know both of you gentlemen. This is Mrs. Fekley. Bill?
Good.
Bill, are you from Pittsburgh State?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know both. Right, okay. So Dan, I know that you are a... You were a classmate and teammate of my son Joseph in high school.
Okay, what was your last name again?
Bramall.
Yeah.
Mrs. Fekley. This is Mrs. Fekley, Dan.
Oh, oh, definitely. Okay, yes. Hi, how are you?
Yeah, very good. And also, Bill, you are on the police... In the campus police department at Pittsburgh State.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're going to be just interviewing you tonight, just to get to know both of you for the Ways and Means Committee, the council, and the public. And just basically what I'd like you to do is just give us a little bit of background, what you've, you know, what you've done in the past and what would make you a good candidate for the operations unit after the emergency management and what you feel is so you can contribute to that operations unit. Both of you have been vetted by Mr. LeBlanc, and he thinks highly of both of you, so I'm sure we will as well, but we just need to get to know you a little bit before we can approve your appointment. So Dan, why don't you go first?
Sure. Mrs. Fekley, accent Danny's dad.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Bramall.
Yeah, okay. Just go ahead. Okay, all right.
That's okay. Well, so you were a parent. So you were a parent, so that's almost the same thing.
Yes, yes, yep. Absolutely.
Okay.
For sure.
Go right ahead.
So basically about two years ago, I was looking to do something to help, actually the military. So I was looking at the different aspects that you've done at this age, age I'm at right now. And I came across the Coast Guard, Attorney Coast Guard Auxiliary. So for the last couple of years, I've been trying to get a niche, you know, in that, you know, in their space, you know? I've been trying to find areas to, you know, that I can help out and be on, you know, sort of a... Have a game plan of what I want to do and keep me busy and everything and help, get help the Coast Guard. So I've been able to go through several different areas and I've figured that out, what I'm doing with them. So I've got a good plan of action there. So I was looking, my... All my kids are gone. They've all gone up, you know, they're out of school, they're all on their own, so there's a lot of free time. And so I was doing that, then I decided, I recently, with the pandemic and everything, I've... Stuff I haven't seen on TV. I've decided, you know, I decided to do something to help in the... Help the people that are, you know, good to food situation, that sort of thing. So a couple of months ago, I joined the St. Fitzpatrick Society, and I actually do the food pantry at St. Joe's once a week there. So I got that rolling. And then I decided, I was trying to actually get into the Coast Guard, the Auxiliary Police Department, so I guess they don't do that. So I saw the application for the Emergency Management System, so I sent that in. And basically, I'm doing the same thing I did with the auxiliary, Coast Guard Auxiliary. I'm trying to, you know, what my game plan would be to get into areas that I can help. It works with everything that I'm doing now. And I think I will be able to do that. I think I've... I actually work today in delivering food, so that's an area that I think I can really help in. And I'm sure there's other areas too, so I'll figure that out. But that's basically it.
Yep. Well, we've gotten some very good candidates for the Emergency Management Operations Unit recently, and I think it probably falls into the same rationalization that you've just made, that, you know, during the pandemic, there's been so many things that have come to people's attention, you know, that need to be done. And so the more volunteers, the better. And, you know, certainly food insecurity has come into the fore quite a bit, you know, since the pandemic and even, you know, before that. So, and your experience, you know, in auxiliary unit or Coast Guard, I'm sure will be invaluable. So thank you very, very much for your willingness to volunteer. That's wonderful.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fisher, would you like to give us a little bit of background on you and what you could contribute to the Emergency Management Operations Unit?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good to talk to you again. So about 25 years ago or so, I started in emergency services as a volunteer firefighter for the town of Orange. I lived in Orange back then. And I've kind of gone through a bunch of different things. And I... So back then, it was volunteer. So I was a volunteer firefighter, volunteer EMT, and then I got on to being a paid EMT for about 10 years in different services, whether it was private or public service. And eventually, I decided to become a police officer and did a small stint in the town of Warwick, and then went on to Pittsburgh State, where I've been for almost 20 years now and have been working with you. As part of those duties, I have had the pleasure of working with the Emergency Management Team for the university as it's been formed over the last five years or so, from, you know, like a three or four-person group to over 30 people with internal stakeholders and external stakeholders from, you know, Pittsburgh Police, Pittsburgh Fire, State Police, NEMA. And through those relationships and things I've learned as far as things that we needed to do at the college as far as, you know, emergency planning and services and all the things. And then on top of that, as Daniel said very well, you know, dealing with COVID at the university and the areas, learn that, you know, the luck goes into this. And then, you know, it hit me one day. I live in the city of Leominster. Why am I not giving back to the city of Leominster in this way? I mean, I've got some experience. I'm sure there's a lot of things I can learn. But at the very least, why am I not giving back to the city in this area? When I'm doing all this work for the university, and that's what I'm paid to do, I live, I'm a, you know, I'm a resident of the city of Leominster, and so it just made sense. And then I went over and visited the facility and talked to Jim. And when I saw the operation he's got over there, it is amazing. There's not many places that have the operation going that that, you know, Leominster Emergency Management has, and I was just in awe. And so I'm like, I gotta be part of this. So that's what drew me in.
That's great.
Cale, Councilor Fekley, I'm going to ask that we suspend this for just a moment so we can open the meeting, and then we'll recess, and the gentlemen will have an opportunity to answer some questions perhaps. So if people would rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. America. To the republic, with its end. One nation under God. Invisible. And liberty. Okay. And I'll take a role in the City Council, starting with Councilor Frida.
Here.
Councilor Dabrowski.
Present.
Councilor Shalafu Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Fekley.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Hardinger.
Present.
Councilor David Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. All nine city councilors are in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the records of the City Council meeting of August 24, 2020, and I signed them to be in order and asked that they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. Could I entertain a motion to go into recess, please?
I'll make that motion with David Cormier.
Have a second. Somebody want a second, Councilor Cormier? A law motion?
Councilor Angelini, a second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of going into recess, please say yea.
Yea.
Anybody opposed? We are in recess, and Councilor Fekley, you can continue with the joint interview.
Thank you very much. We'll just wrap up with Bill. Bill, I know I've seen you in many different roles on, at the university over the years, and you've always stood out as a leader and somebody that could be depended upon. So, you know, the city of Leominster is very lucky that you decided to volunteer to help us out, and I'm sure that you'll be invaluable to the Emergency Operations Unit. So now I'm going to see if hand it over to Councilor Frida, who is the second member of the Ways and Means Committee, for any comments or questions for either Mr. Bramall or Mr. Fisher.
Go both. Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Just a quick note, there's really not much to add or ask. You've pretty much covered everything. But just to Mr. Bramall, there's also a pretty strong dive unit. I don't know if you're... You were involved in the Coast Guard Auxiliary to, you know, hit the waters at all, but that's another aspect of emergency management you might want to look at.
I definitely will. I saw that. I'm interested, sure.
I have a Coast Guard experience under the Coast Guard in Virginia, so getting familiarized with things a little bit. I guess, you know, you both epitomize the, you know, the philosophy of if you need something done, ask somebody who's busy. And it sounds like both of you are really, really perfect candidates for that. And, you know, I'm sure you'll do a fine job. Your credentials are great, and thank you for volunteering.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilor Frida, all set?
All set, thank you.
All right. Is Councilor Dabrowski present?
I am.
Okay. Any comments or questions, Councilor Dabrowski, for you, the gentleman?
Well, I know Mr. Bramall from our Little League days together as parents. And I can certainly attest to, you know, him being a real quality person. Mr. Fisher likewise is presenting as a quality person as well, and I just really want to thank them very much for volunteering for the city and for their well intentions and their good work. I just would like to thank them.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other councilors have any comments or questions?
Yes, this is Councilor Hardinger. And I would have to say that I've known Dan since he was a high school kid. I hired him to work for me a long time ago, Dan.
A long time, yep.
And then consequently, he hired me to work in another industry later on. So we go back, and he's always been a very hard worker. He, you know, if he sets his mind to it, he gets anything done that he needs to get done, and he certainly would be an asset to the Emergency Management Team.
Thank you, Frank.
That's good to hear, Councilor Hardinger. Any other councilors? Okay, hearing none, gentlemen. We're going to be going on to your appointments later on on the agenda, and I will be very pleased to recommend that to the committee and then to the full council. So thank you very, very much for coming this evening. We wish that we could meet you in person, but things are the way they are, and we wish you all the best in the future, and thank you so much for stepping up and volunteering for this unit.
Okay. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor. We can now move on to the public hearing that is scheduled for 6:54. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. President. This is a public hearing before the Leominster City Council. Petition 8-21. Thomas F. Hardinger, Councilor-at-Large, requests that a mass DOT-approved slow dangerous curb sign be placed on the westerly side of Grant Street, 100 feet, more or less from the northerly intersection of Imperial Avenue and Grant Street. We did get a communication from John Frayer of Leominster Police Department dated August 31, 2020. Communication reads as follows: "Good morning. The LPD supports it. We do not believe this sign requires council approval, and we believe it's a replacement of a sign that has probably been missing for some years. We already spoke to DPW and began the process." Consequently, we did get a written request from the petitioner to withdraw the petition under the circumstances, but we did advertise, so we do have to hold a public hearing. I will ask if there are any members of Legal Affairs or the council as a whole that wish to comment or have any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss someone?
No, that's... Yes, this is Councilor Shalafu Zephyr. I was going to say, no, I agree with the... I support the petitioner's request to give it leave to withdraw.
Okay. And Councilor Cormier is the third member. Are you also in accord?
I do as well, if that is the proper course of action, yes.
Okay. And does any other member of the council have any questions or comments? And hearing none, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Hearing no one, Mr. President, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Very well. Public hearing is closed. We will now conduct to the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council this evening? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum this evening? And for a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? Hearing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, starting with communications from the mayor in first appointments.
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paul Redmond to the position of Treasurer Collector for the city of Leominster for a term of three years, effective October 5, 2020.
Appointment of Paul Redmond to the position of Treasurer Collector for the city of Leominster is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is first time on the agenda. I would ask Madam Clerk if she could contact Mr. Redmond and set him up for a virtual interview at our next meeting. Also, could we please be supplied with resume of Mr. Redmond? And I would like to set up a very brief virtual subcommittee meeting, which could actually even be held before our next meeting or, you know, right before our next meeting on the same day, or if my other committee members would like to suggest, otherwise, that's fine. A regular course and setting up a subcommittee meeting.
Okay. And maybe we'll see what we have for any, if we have any public hearings or other interviews, and we'll set, before the end of the night, Councilor will set a date for your subcommittee meeting, a date and time for your subcommittee meeting. All right.
Thank you.
So the measure confirming the appointment of Paul Redmond to the position of Treasurer Collector for the city of Leominster has been given regular course with an interview, hopefully at the next City Council meeting. Moving on to the next appointment of William Connor.
A measure confirming the mayor's extended appointment of William Connor as interim Chief Assessor for an additional 60 days for the city of Leominster until the office can be filled by a permanent appointment.
The measure confirming the extended appointment of William Connor is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course.
Very well. The measure confirming the extended appointment of William Connor to the job of interim Chief Assessor has been given regular course. Moving on to orders, starting with C-14.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $55,105 be made to the treasurer's salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-14 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C-14 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-15.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $500,000 be made to the wastewater capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-15 is...
Regarding... I missed a part.
That's okay.
Regarding fiscal year 2019, excess rate proceeds closed out to the general fund to be used for capital outlay purposes.
C-15 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
President, once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you. Moving on to C-16.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $550,000 be made to the water department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Regarding fiscal year 2019, proceeds closed out to general fund to be used for more stem repair.
C-16 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C-16 is given regular course. Moving on to C-17.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $10,000 be made to the fire department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-17 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C-17 is given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 9-21.
Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, request to amend Article 6, Section 22-34, Special District Regulations, flood plea.
Petition 9-21 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with referrals to the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Building Inspector.
Very well. Petition 9-21 is given regular course with referrals to the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Building Inspector. Moving on to 10-21.
Ramani M. Igodaro, doing business as Ramani Motors, request the second-hand dealer's license for Ramani Motors located at 179 Willard Street, number 208.
10-21 is referred to the Chairman of... I'm sorry, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, and we don't need referrals. The city clerk has furnished us with them already.
Excellent. 10-21 is given regular course, and the referrals are already in. Moving on to 11-21.
Gennaro L. Hall, doing business as buyer, request a second-hand dealer's license for Spire located at 502 Lancaster Street, suite 102.
11-21 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you. Similarly, this will be given regular course and no referrals necessary. They have already been entered.
Very well. 11-21 is given regular course, and the referrals have already been received. Moving on to 12-21.
Susan Shalafu Zephyr, Councilor-at-Large, and Mark Badanza, Ward 4 Counselor, request two feedback speed zone signs to be installed at each end of Hill Street.
12-21 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Regular course, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. 12-21 is in regular course. Moving on to 13-21.
Susan Shalafu Zephyr, Councilor-at-Large, and Gail Fekley, Ward 1 Counselor, request that a crosswalk be installed at Nutting Drive in Prospect Street.
13-21 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Regular course. I think we can check with the Police Department and the DPW because I'm not quite sure that we need council action on a crosswalk. I think it may be just be able to be done with the DPW.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you mind determining that and finding out whether that's the case or not? Otherwise, we'll give 13-21, in any event, regular course at this point. Okay, thank you, Councilor. Matters before the City Council, starting off with the city of Leominster financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. On July 1, 2020, we started out with $14,189,152.27 in the stabilization account. Cash for fiscal year 19 was closed out and deposited in the stabilization fund by us, and that was a total of $7,401,64. Include... To date, including the communication... Fund. I did speak to the Comptroller. He did acknowledge that that still needs to be done. He said there is no timeframe that is a requirement for them to do it, and he will get those figures and have that done. He indicated to me, when he is ready to, we will get a communication from him to move the funds. So, you know, usually, I think they're in the order of a few million dollars, so, you know, we can kind of, you know, estimate that you can take at least $3 million off of that $20, because that is water in store that needs to be repaid. Although I think, given the communications that we have on here for the first time tonight, some of that money will just be automatically reduced because we're spending out of that now, technically. So he will do all of the math, and he will get us a figure. He said when he's ready to do that. So that is all that I have this evening for the financial report, Mr. President. Thank you.
If there are any questions on the financial report.
Yes, Mr. President. This is Councilor Frida. I'm glad to see that we have some of the money released. I mean, this is something that's been done the 30 years, 27 years I've been sitting here, just out of free cash, and I didn't want people to think we had that extra $3 or $4 million in free cash that we don't. I'm glad to see some of it has come out inside some of the projects. I understand why the Comptroller is doing what he's doing. I think this pandemic is going to be crucial to whatever we're going to be doing in the future. So I get it. I'm just glad some of it has been released with water in store to do some of that project.
Very well. Thank you, Councilor. All right. Moving on to Legal Affairs, and 8-21. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 8-21, Thomas F. Hardinger, Councilor-at-Large, request that a mass Department of Transportation approved slow dangerous curb sign be placed on the westerly side of Grant Street, 100 feet, plus or minus, from the northerly intersection of Imperial Avenue and Grant Street. We did have a public hearing on this matter, and as I indicated at the public hearing, the Leominster Police Department is in favor of this, but the situation is that there was a sign there at one point, and they are in the process of taking the steps necessary... um, and they are in the process of taking the steps necessary, uh, with the DPW to reinstall that sign. Um, so, given those circumstances, the petitioner has asked for, uh, leave to withdraw. So, my recommendation, um, Mr. President, and I ask you to call my committee, is leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Very well, Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yes, absolutely agree.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to grant eight dash twenty-one, leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor David Cormier.
You may proceed, Counselor.
Thank you. I, I just want to, uh, you know, say as the ward counselor that the counselor-at-large, you know, contacted me and, you know, let me know that he was going to, uh, you know, be putting petition in, and, and I, I appreciate his help. There's certainly a lot of these issues in Ward Three that constantly need to be looked at, um, and, um, I, I fully support it. So, you know, if there's anything I can do to continue to help, you know, this, this, and see this thing through, working with the, the office of DPW, the police department, you know, and the at-large counselor and anybody else that's necessary, I, I certainly, um, I certainly support it. Um, obviously, you know, that end of town has become very, very busy with all the subdivisions that have been built around and people cutting through. Um, definitely, the more signage, you know, the better, to get people to, uh, to slow down, and, and if there's anything I can do to further help, once again, I'm, I'm available. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further, any additional discussion?
Uh, this is Counselor Ardinger, and, uh, just for information purposes, the, uh, DPW is very prompt. The sign has been installed now for about a week, and it looks terrific. I just hope it, uh, it does slow people down coming around that curve because, uh, again, it's a situation where, you know, people turning into Lakeview Drive take their life in their hands, uh, and let's just hope it helps.
Thank you, Counselor. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Um, the report is to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, all in favor, say yea. Yea?
Yea.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, petition eight dash twenty-one is given leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to the Ways and Means Committee, starting off with appointments, and Daniel Grammel. Does the chairwoman of Ways and Means have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Um, this is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Daniel Grammel to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer. We had Mr. Grammel on the phone this evening, um, interviewed him. He is a former member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Um, he is now retired and has free time, and during this pandemic has realized that the issues, um, that include, not only including food insecurity and, uh, other needs that people have, have come to the forefront, and he is very willing to help out. He's helping out with a food pantry now, and he is, um, interested in helping out the, the city of Leominster. So, my recommendation would be to approve, uh, confirm the appointment of Daniel Grammel to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer, and I'll ask you to call my committee.
Very well, Counselor, Counselor Frida?
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the mayor's appointment of Daniel Grammel to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. Daniel Grammel's appointment to the Emergency Management Operations Unit is confirmed. Moving on to the appointment of William Fisher. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of William Fisher to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer. I have personally known Bill Fisher for, um, most of his twenty years at Pittsburgh State University. I have seen his rise, uh, through the ranks of the university police, and have served with him on many committees, and find him to be a very dedicated, um, leader, um, and I think that the Office of Emergency Management, um, will be able to use his, um, invaluable talent. So, my recommendation would be to confirm the appointment of William Fisher to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer, and I ask you to call my committee.
Very well, Counselor Frida?
I agree with that confirmation.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the mayor's appointment of William Fisher to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor, uh, Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
Uh, recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. William Fisher's appointment to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit is hereby confirmed. Moving on to C dash thirteen. Is the chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C dash thirteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Diana Richard be exempted from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Two, Sixty-eight A, Twenty B, Conflict of Interest, regarding election work. Um, my recommendation would be to approve, um, the exemption, and I would ask you to call my committee.
Very well, uh, Counselor Frida?
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to provide Diana Richard an exemption from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Two, Sixty-eight A, Section Twenty-B, with respect to election work. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. C thirteen, C thirteen is granted. Moving on to new business. Before we do the first readings, um, could we go back just for a second to petition twelve dash twenty-one before the Public Service Committee? Um, would the chairwoman be eligible to referring that to the DPW and Police Department as well?
Uh, which one, twelve?
Twelve dash twenty-one.
Is that your sign?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine. And actually, you're the Police Department as well.
Yes, yes. Um, all right, very well. Madam Clerk, uh, just please note that twelve twenty-one is not only given regular course, but referred to DPW and Police Department. Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Frida. Okay, moving on to new, thank you, new business, um, first reading of an ordinance. Is the chairman of legal affairs ready to report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, uh, formally petition one dash twenty-one. David R. Cormier, request to install a stop sign against southwestbound drivers on Comstock Road at Birchcroft Road. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to call my committee.
Uh, Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
I agree with that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? This will be, uh, by roll call. Counselor, uh, Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I was recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance is granted. Moving on to the first reading of formerly dat-, two dash twenty-one. Is the chair, chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Uh, first reading of an ordinance. This is formerly petition two dash twenty-one. Uh, David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter Thirteen, Section Thirteen dash thirty-four to read the following. No parking on Albert Drive, Albert Drive, southbound from the north intersection of Central Street, rear of four-two-four Central Street, to the southermost point of the rear of four-forty-four Central Street property, right side only. Albert Drive, northbound along the length of forty, Albert Drive, right side only. Uh, this is an ordinance that, at the suggestion of the, uh, Police Department, was amended. Uh, I did check to ensure that the first reading of the ordinance as presented, uh, here tonight is the amended version, and in fact, it is the amended version. My recommendation, Mr. President, is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to call my committee.
Very well, um, Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yes, I agree with that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I, one suggestion, if, if the clerk could send this over to the Police Department just one more time so they can look at it in its final form before we pass the second reading, to make sure that they are okay with the language and that it is enforceable. I just don't want the same situation to happen. I think we recently had one on Research Drive, and the language wasn't right. So, since we amended this, I just want to make sure that they have seen it in final form and are totally good with it before we pass the second reading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well, uh, is there any further discussion? You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I have a concern with this. Uh, I, uh, actually addressed it at the last meeting. Um, for many years, this council has decided to not get involved with, uh, neighbor disputes, and I, I feel like that's what part of this is. Um, I drove by there last week, um, after the council had talked about the, the traffic and the parking, and I counted eighteen cars. And today, I drove by there this morning, there were twenty-two cars, and they're all attributed to that, to the auto repair business that's right there. Um, I called the, the building inspector to ask if he's had any issues with it, and he's been down there numerous times, and he can't seem to get them to comply. Um, I find that difficult, being a zoning enforcement officer, but, um, I, I'm not sure we should be legislating issues that are zoning violations. I mean, uh, uh, are we doing this so that we can tell them if, if that's the issue? There are, uh, there's got to be way more cars there than are allowed, you know, by their permit. So, I, I really think we should give this further time and look further into it with the building inspector. Look at the violations that we've had and, um, do some real research on it because not bad of the people that live there in the, uh, residential properties to not be able to have company parked in front of their homes because we're doing no parking so that, that, uh, company overtaxes itself. So, I, you know, I just have some real issues over there, and I think we need to look at it a little closer.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, this is, um, Feckley.
Yes, go ahead. Go, please proceed, Counselor.
Thank you. So, I, I too took a ride by this property. I believe it was on a Wednesday afternoon, around two or three o'clock in the afternoon, so the business was, um, you know, open at that time. Um, I did see quite a few cars, but I also did see cars that I thought would be attributed to, um, the homes there, um, parked all along their properties, um, off their driveways. Um, and I, I think that there is a lot of parking on both sides. I think there's parking, too much parking in, on the business side, and too much parking, um, in the homeowner's side. There's just so much parking. There's a lot of cars. There's, um, there's motorcycles, there's trucks. It's, um, it's a very, um, you know, busy, busy street. And, uh, so, I would also agree that maybe we should look into it a little bit more and see, you know, what is attributing to all of this traffic, um, and parking, and, and give this further time.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor David Cormier. Um, I, you know, I just, I, I can, you know, appreciate all the concerns and, uh, you know, there, I, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's, it's on file. It's public knowledge. There have been some, you know, problems there with, uh, you know, building code violations, but I just want to stress that this parking issue has nothing to do with building code violations. There, there are safety issues with people parking on the street, and I put this petition in because, uh, somebody down there that had concerns about this went to the Police Department, and the Police Department told them to contact me to have a petition put in. So, you know, I, I, that's, that's just merely what I did. They, they have some parking issues down there, some safety issues. Um, they're concerned about, uh, emergency apparatus not being able to get up and down, and they have, at this point, no, uh, ordinance, no vehicle, if you will, to issue violations for parking because they're currently, you know, parking is allowed. So, from a, a, a police standpoint and from a legislative standpoint, that's what we're talking about here. All the other stuff, all the other violations have nothing to do with this petition at all. So, um, I just want to make, you know, that ve- very clear. We have no jurisdiction over the other, any other violations anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Uh, does any other member of the council have something to add?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I disagree with that. Um, no, we don't have any jurisdiction over the building department, but if there is zoning violation, and I'm not saying that the parking is a zoning violation, the business itself, there are way too many, you know, if anybody drove down there, the twenty cars that I counted today, over half of them had fenders off, grills removed. They're all the cars that have been in accident, so they're attributed to that business. And if you look, there isn't, uh, uh, you couldn't put a bicycle in the middle of their parking lot because it, it's just bumper to bumper, whole parking lot, and the, the rest is on the street. Um, I agree that it's dangerous. I'm, I'm not saying it isn't, but, you know, knowing no parking isn't the solution to the problem. It's looking at the business and, and whatever their violations are to encourage the building department to deal with them.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, again, any further discussion on, on two dash twenty-one? Okay, hearing none. The unanimous recommendation of legal affairs was to grant. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafos Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier? Uh, who's your counsel? That was yea?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had myself muted.
That's okay. Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea, uh, by a vote of- I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of seven to two. The first reading of the ordinance is granted. Moving on to first reading of an ordinance, formally seven dash twenty-one. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, formally petition seven dash twenty-one. John Dombrowski, Counselor-at-Large, request to amend Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash seventy-seven to read the following. Install a stop sign against eastbound drivers on Birchcroft Road at Comstock Road. My recommendation is to grant the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to call my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalafou Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier?
Also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalafou Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
That shall be recorded yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance is granted. We have no old business. Is there anything that anyone has under the community calendar? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, if I could for a minute?
Just Counselor.
Can we go back to the appointment for the treasurer and also for the assessor? Just a curiosity question, wasn't anything. Could the court find out why one appointment is being made and another appointment is an extension of an interim appointment? What determines one over the other? Maybe there's a legal reason that the treasurer has to be a permanent position right out of the gate. But just a, just curiosity question.
All right. Well, I guess that's a, that's within the mayor's purview. So, if he would like to provide us some information, I'm sure the clerk would inquire. Could you do that, Madam Clerk?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, Counselor Frida?
Oh, that's good.
Thank you. Anybody?
Mr. President? Yes, this is Counselor Feckley.
Yes, Counselor Feckley.
Yes, I wanted to set up a subcommittee meeting regarding the measure to appoint the treasurer collector.
Okay. So, we have no hearings at the next meeting, correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
And, but we have a potential interview with at least the candidate for treasurer, right?
That's correct.
So, we're going to want to probably schedule about fifteen minutes or so for that, perhaps? I don't know. What do you think? Why don't we schedule that at six fifty?
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Feckley, do you want to schedule your subcommittee meeting sometime before that?
Yeah, I'd like at least twenty minutes or so. We haven't seen this gentleman's resume yet. And I know we'll be reviewing them individually, but I'd like to review them, you know, as a committee, review it as a committee. So, perhaps twenty minutes?
If that's okay.
If that's convenient to my committee.
Okay. Is everybody on the Ways and Means Committee available at six thirty for that subcommittee meeting?
That's fine.
Fine with me.
And that, is that okay with you, Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes, that's fine with me as well.
All right. So, Counselor, the city clerk will establish your subcommittee meeting at six thirty on our next meeting date, which I guess is September twenty eighth?
Correct.
Okay. Any other old business? All right. Anybody have anything else before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I adjourn.
By Counselor Ardinger to have a second?
Second by Counselor Angelini.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? No, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice rest.
Thank you.
All right, everyone.
Night, all.
Bye.
Bye.